Good morning. My name is Don Michaelman, and I want to welcome you to the October 12, 2023, public hearing of the City of Prescott Planning Commission. I would like to have each of our members of the commission introduce themselves before we start, and we'll start with Jim.
Yes, good morning. My name is James Whiting, and I go by Jim.
Good morning. I'm Susan Graham.
Good morning, Tom Riley.
Good morning, Ted Gamboji.
Good morning, Jim Kloszuski.
Also, I'd like to welcome Councilmember Connie Can Tellme, attending the meeting Staff members will introduce themselves when they come up to the podium. This is an open public hearing and is being videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media. The public, local cable, and/or radio stations may also rebroadcast. The number of commissioners present is six. It will require a majority vote of those present to pass a motion. Members of the public, when called upon, are required to state their name for the record so that we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them at a later date if necessary. Also, I'd like to have you check your cellphones, either have them on mute or turn them off. Would appreciate that. First item on the agenda is the approval of the September 28, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
There were two corrections that I made.
Is there a motion concerning the minutes?
So moved. Moved to approve the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes, Tom Riley.
Is there a second?
Susan Graham, a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sarah, would you call?
Commissioner Gamboji.
Approved.
Commissioner Graham.
Approved.
Commissioner Kloszuski.
Approved.
Commissioner Riley.
Approved.
Commissioner Whiting.
Approved.
Commissioner Michaelman.
I abstain because I was not attending the meeting, so I cannot vote on it. Next item we have is S I T E 22-004, Site Plan Review for a 223-unit residential rental complex on approximately 28.6 acres. Zoning SPC and LUG is V. Owner: Deepwell Ranches, Number 1 LLC. Applicant: Terriscape Consulting. Location is APN 102-05-324N. George.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is George Worley. I'm the Planning Manager for the City of Prescott. This project's been before you in the past, about six months ago, June-ish timeframe, came before you for review. There were some questions, and the applicants requested time to make some modifications and to provide additional information, which they've done. And now we're back before you for review of the project. Just to give you an idea of where the project is located, it's at the northwest corner of Pioneer Parkway and Willow Creek Road. This area was designated as part of Deepwell Ranch Master Plan for multifamily or residential uses. The land use group you mentioned, Land Use Group V, stands for Village. It is a higher-density land use that allows multifamily projects like this one. Just to give you another view of it based on zoning, so the gold-colored zoning of the project is special planned communities. That's the SPC district that allows for a master plan to control land uses within the Deepwell Ranch master planned area. Obviously, airport impacts are an important issue in this area of town. One of the things that the project developers have worked with the airport on is to assure that the area of highest concentration of overflights, which you'll see in the longer redder color, that's Impact Zone 4. Most of their project is out of it. They do have some parking that you'll see on the site plan that lies within that area, but parking is a relatively low impact when it comes to noise and overflight. They've managed to keep the rest of the development within Airport Impact Zone 6, which is the lighter color. The entire project is split between the 55 DNL and 60 DNL. Those of you who were on the commission during the discussion of the airport overlay district, vicinity overlay, will remember that those two were, two impact, or two noise contour areas were areas where there's a lot of noise created by aircraft, and there's adverse impact on property owners and residents in either or both of them. Back to the master plan, the allowances for the V designation, Village designation, are listed here, and I provided you copies of that in your staff report because I know this is probably very hard to read. They allow for relatively small lots and relatively dense development, units per acre, that type of thing. The proposed project meets those requirements. They're proposing 223 dwelling units on 28 and 1/2 acres. That's 7.7 units per acre. That's actually in the low to moderate density designation in our general plan, not uncommon among other subdivisions. You'll notice when I pull up the site plan that much of the site has open space and parking. The project is distributed fairly well within the property. This is one of the improvements that came out of the delay. The prior site plan was a line drawing without color, was very hard to read. There was a lot of information on it. This has been simplified to show the unit locations, driveway locations, parking, and then the major drainage that runs through the south 1/3 of the project. One of the questions that came up specifically, and again, I've addressed it in the staff report at the last meeting, was the height of the tallest building in the project. That building is, in fact, the black building in the top 1/3. That is the community center building at 30 feet 5 inches. Typical residential, single-family zoning allows up to 35 feet in height. And a little view from the developers of what the project will look like. So again, the project appears to be dense when you look at just the number of units, but if you look at the layout, there's a lot of common area that's available to residents And for our IT support guys, I think you don't have to rerun it. Thank you. The airport has been involved. The project developer has been in contact with the airport director, Dr. Sabata. There were a number of agreed conditions and comments from the airport. I don't, do you want to speak to them, or?
If they want.
Do you want to hear from the airport director? Or if you have specific questions, she can also answer specific questions.
Yes, have Robin come up.
So we had some great conversations with Nick Rounds. Nick? Okay, great. Thanks so much for the time. So before the grading permits are issued, they're going to complete the 7460 process, which is an aerospace evaluation for temporary obstructions. The permanent obstruction one had been done, but the temporary is still pending, so whatever that needs to happen, that will comply. Also, at the end of the construction period, once you have the permanent obstructions actually built, you do a 7460-2, and that says you've closed out the project and the obstruction exists. The site plan will be updated to indicate limitations for the portion of the site that is actually in Impact Zone 4, and so they will actually put on the, they will indicate on the areas that are Impact Zone 4 that there will be limitations of 14 feet in height, and that there will be unoccupied structures only that are parking. So it could be a garage, it could be a structure, and we'd agreed on 14 feet. We did evaluate that, and that worked out fine. Okay? And the height restrictions for natural growth, they indicated that vegetation will never exceed that clubhouse, which is 30 feet 5 inches, and that's great, and that you'll make sure that that's maintained in perpetuity. So if something happens to go over the top, you'll trim it down. The airport disclosure documents, thank you so much for your help on this. They assured that disclosure documents that are like the Exhibit B at the end of the navigation easement will be presented to rental residents. That's really helpful because they're not buying these residents, they're going to be living in them, so it's a disclosure. And that'll inform the current, the current residents of the takeoff and landing, which right now is averaging about 877 takeoffs and landings a day in and out of Prescott Regional Airport. That's a takeoff and landing about every 66 seconds. And then also, the rental agreement will include a clause to allow residents to terminate the lease without penalty within the first three months of rental due to aircraft noise and overflight. And again, thank you so much for agreeing to include all of that in there. So we feel that that was an excellent way to make sure that these individuals are properly notified. Thank you. Unless they have questions.
Are there questions for Robin? Jim?
Excuse me, Jim Kloszuski. As we expand the airport in the future, will this impact any future goals of the airport?
We believe that the way that this has been proposed and negotiated, we feel very confident that as long as those notifications do occur, which we have agreed on, that individuals who move in will have proper notifications, as well as the opportunity to be able to vacate. We don't want people to move in as residents and become activists against the future expansion, and we think that this approach will be helpful. The noise contour that you showed was at the 2021 versus the 20, yeah, so there's a 2021, and there's also a 20, projected 2026 contour, and that is available to residents as well. So we believe that this is in concert with the future development of the airport. Thank you.
Other questions? Ted?
I have questions of George.
Okay.
Could you go back to the slide that showed the?
Certain. Which one?
The structures.
The fly-through?
No, not the fly-through. The structures.
So these, these again are rental units.
So Zone 4 kind of cuts through that parking lot, right?
Correct. So if you look at the backside of the buildings that parallel the northwest side of the property, that's approximately where Zone 4's boundary is. So, and I apologize the way that we're set up, I can't point at it, but the area northwest of all of the buildings is within Zone 4, and it's designated as parking for the facilities and overflow parking for the residents.
In that same northwest area, there seems to be a, I don't know, a gray structure that's not a living quarters. Can you tell me what that is?
I believe that is a mechanical building or a storage building.
In your video, it showed a lot of grass.
It did show a lot of grass.
And it showed a lot of non-native species, but we're going to stay by the, or rule that?
We, we have, we have a code requirement that lists off plant species that are low water usage, drought tolerant, and native species that has been adopted by the city into its codes, into the land development code and into the water policy. They will be bound by that requirement in order to obtain permits.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple more points to bring up in the presentation. I do want to point out that one of the questions that was asked of us, asked specifically by a commissioner, and unfortunately, he's not here today, was traffic impact in the area. What would 223 rental units do to any traffic on the existing Willow Creek Road, the proposed new Jenna Lane, which will be the primary access into this project, and to properties and roadways south of there? And I did invite our traffic engineer, Ian Mattingly, to speak to you briefly about that, and Ian is here. If you would indulge me a moment to finish this staff presentation with Ian speaking.
Yeah, I don't think I. Good morning. Ian Mattingly, yeah, Transportation Manager, City of Prescott. So I'll just try to go over the general, you know, summary of what's going on in the area. The South Ranch, or this multifamily complex is part of a larger traffic impact analysis submitted by Deepwell called the South Ranch Development. It includes the development here, includes some commercial development going on across the street to the east, and then further up Jenna Lane to the north and west, which will eventually include residential housing. So this development is going to generate about 1,390 trips over a 24-hour period. It will have an impact of approximately, in the range of 100 peak hour trips in the AM or PM. It has a single access point on Jenna Lane. Did you have that, could you bring up that picture of the housing? Yeah, the site drawing. The one we were just looking at. Thank you. So the primary access is going to be at the top of the page there, where the, that's the sole access, and then there's an emergency access down near that, on the right side of the development of Willow Creek Road, where there's that little light square. So that's a gated emergency access only, but primary access will be on the top of the site, onto Jenna Lane. Now, in conjunction with all this development that is going on in the area, as many of you have seen, they're widening, they're doing some improvements out there, they're kind of grading in Jenna Lane. So Jenna Lane and Willow Creek will be improved in this area. Willow Creek Road will be improved to a four-lane section from the south at Pioneer Parkway, north through Jenna Lane, where the intersection will be widened to its full width, which is a five-lane roadway on Willow Creek and a five-lane roadway on Jenna Lane. The roadway system is being built for not just this development, but to handle the traffic of the future developments. And we are confident that these improvements, you know, will certainly serve this in the interim and then all the development that's going on. The intersection of Jenna Lane and Willow Creek will have a signal conduit and all the infrastructure done for a future signal, which will be triggered at not this development or the Findlay Hyundai dealer that's going across the way, but one or two of the single-family residences when and if they continue to come. So we are confident in the roadway system and the ability for it to carry all this traffic. Jenna Lane, while it will be an ultimate five-lane roadway, the current configuration is to build the south improvements along the frontage where their access is to a three-lane interim configuration, so there'll be one lane in each direction, and then dedicated turnpockets like into this development. And then it will be widened at some future point when the development continues to the north. If you had specific questions, I can try to address them. But yeah, the TIA has been submitted about a year ago for this entire area. It was approved by staff, and they're, they're moving forward with these two kind of concurrent Willow Creek and Jenna Lane improvements, Findlay, Hyundai, and if this one's approved, this one will just fit right in.
Ted?
Thank you, Ian. I think the last time we saw you was a proposal for a mini-storage on Willow Creek, and the people in Pinion Oaks told us about the traffic. Now, this is just kind of a mirror, kind of a mirror image of Pinion Oaks. With the description of what you'd told us about Jenna Lane and Willow Creek, how is that going to be better than what's just south of it on Pinion Oaks?
Yeah, so, well, for one thing, Jenna Lane is anticipated to have signalized control. So, you know, Pinion Oaks is a lot of, maybe some people who live there are here, but we all know that's not signal, not signalized. This one has adequate spacing to allow that to be planned from Pioneer Parkway to there, so that's a natural fit for a signal. The traffics, and I will say, the traffic study did look at the impacts down at least Pioneer Parkway, which we know has, you know, traffic increasing at all times, but this isn't going to be another Pinion Oaks. There's going to be dedicated improvements to easily handle the traffic. This is a minor traffic impact. When you look at the overall roadway system, the five-lane road, it's designed to handle all of Deepwell. But, and then we certainly did appreciate that they didn't ask for any access along Willow Creek Road. This is important to not have access apart from the signalization that is going to take place at Jenna. You might have noticed there's also a median that's been put in on Willow Creek, kind of under construction purposes. That was for Findlay. We're trying to control that whole corridor with medians. You'll see some more of that, but it, it's going to be much different than that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions for you? I have a curious question. Why a traffic signal versus a roundabout?
Well, for one, roundabouts are typically looked at. When we warrant a signal, then if we have additional concerns, maybe we need 20, like a higher capacity than could be handled by a signal, we might put that in. Or if we have additional, we have additional right-of-way, or we have heavy lefts, or something that's a little out of the ordinary. I know we have favored them in some locations, especially to handle a lot of traffic, but it really comes down to, we don't mandate the construction of roundabouts in lieu of traffic signals. And in this case, a traffic signal will provide good operational service through the entire build-out that's planned for this area and all our projected traffic. So you didn't need to take the extra right-of-way, and you didn't need to take the extra expense to build that. That's really the answer.
Okay.
And this is, these, these improvements are being done by Deepwell. So the widening of Willow Creek, the construction of Jenna, the future signalization will all be paid for by the developer, not the city.
Any questions? Thanks, Ian. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, that ends the staff presentation for you. Certainly, planning staff can help answer any questions you may have that are planning-related. I put a recommended motion up for you. If you have more questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Any further questions for staff? Would the applicant like to make a presentation or make comments?
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Dave Grounds. I'm one of the founders and owners of The Great Street Company, which is the developer here on the project. Thank you for collaborating with us. Thank you for staff, for Dr. Sabata. It's been a pleasure to work with everyone. Hopefully, we answered all of the questions from the last presentation six months ago. The only, the only thing that's come up, and it was a question that came up this week from Dr. Sabata to my son Nick, all the things that we've agreed to, the one that we cannot on a practical basis in the request that came from the airport, this will be a $60 million project, and our clientele will be long-term renters. We're not trying to go for short-term, two, three-month people that are moving in and out of town. We want people to stay here long-term. We want them to be, become part of, part of Prescott. And in many ways, and hopefully you noticed it on the architecture, we're spending the right amount of money in the right places so that you don't want to leave when you move in. But to get financing on a project like this, at this level, if we put a clause in the financing that says anyone that moves in can move out three months later, we would not get the financing. And we've checked with, with three different big national lenders. So because we are disclosing everything, and, and I built a lot of the houses between the airport and this project over the last seven years, and many of those homes are in the fives and sixes, there's a few in the sevens, those folks invested in the area, and, and they like it a lot. This is just a rental community, so these folks are making a decision on staying for a year. So we're confident that, that they're going to love it, because, and it's also quite a bit further away from the airport than the homes I just mentioned. So my only request for Dr. Sabata and for all of you is, is in everything that we've agreed to do, the one thing that I'm asking for a blessing to not do is I can't give a person the ability, once they commit, and when our, when our people come in to look at our community, they're touring the whole town, they're touring that area, they're going through our models. We're happy to do a presentation. I mean, we can collaborate with Dr. Sabata on what that presentation is to every prospect. It can even be a video, and we can tell them. And it will be in writing with the navigation easement and the disclosures on how many flights a day there are. So there's nothing to hide, and we'll even have a directional that shows how far away the airport is. So anyone that's going to sign a lease to agree to live there will have full knowledge that there is an airport and it has that many flights a day. We just need to make sure that once they commit, once we get their post office set up, once we, they move in, and all the expenses associated with that, that we don't, we don't let them just leave three months later because they, they say, oh, I didn't know there was a, an airport there. So that would be my only request. And then I'm just, I'm up here to answer any additional questions. What we're excited about on this community is unlike a traditional rental community, where you build a big tan rectangle three-story box, and it's called garden apartments, which is the furthest thing we think from the term garden. We've invested a lot of time and energy and creativity in building something that we think will be timeless and that the town will be proud of, and as you drive by, it'll, it'll be a compliment to the City of Prescott, not a deterrent. And like Astoria that we built years ago that won best architecture in the country, I'm, I'm super excited that this will as well. But I'm here to just answer any, any questions, concerns, anything.
Any questions? The applicant, Tom?
Excuse me. Yeah, I have a question. So if I understand your request now, one of the stipulations that was put in is that a, that Dr. Sabata talked about was that, the last one, rental agreement will include a clause allowing residents to terminate the lease without penalty for the first three months of rental due to aircraft noise or overflights. You're asking that that stipulation be not included?
Correct. And what that is, it was a question from Dr. Sabata to my son. And so we took the question, we did a bunch of research, and that's the only one of all the other stipulations that, that on a practical level that we can't live with. And I'm a yes guy, hopefully you've realized that. I rarely say no when we're collaborating with the city. But I also want to, want to bring up something when it's not practical or realistic that we can deliver. I don't want to, I don't want to agree to that and then have to come back to you later and say, I'm sorry, we can't start our project. The banks don't, they don't like that part.
Follow-up question. Because I understand that we're approved, what we're doing today is approving the site plan. So the stipulations that are put up over here, additional airport comments, that has nothing to do with our approval or our rejection today, or does it?
It, it could be. So you could approve with a recommendation to include the stipulations. Remember, you're making a recommendation to council. Ultimately, council has to approve the site plan. This set of stipulations could be included later in that process at council. Or you can make a recommendation to include all or all but one in your motion. I didn't include them because at the time that we put the agenda packet out to you, I didn't have the list of bullet points. So it is up to the commission. You can include stipulations, or you can just make a recommendation on the site plan and the site layout for this project, and then that's something that can be negotiated and worked out as it goes to council.
Okay. Again, another follow-up question. To my knowledge, the council has not yet adopted the AVO, the Airport Vicinity Overlay. Is that correct?
They have not.
So the, the DNL that's there is a recommendation at this point and not necessarily a binding stipulation. Is that correct?
The noise contours are created through studies that are done of noise contours. There's been no formal adoption of them through a document like the AVO, through a zoning document like the AVO.
So there's no law in place right now that says that this has to be?
There's no zoning law that says this has to be.
Thank you.
Jim Kloszuski, I have a question. I know the last time you were in front of us, we talked about the issue of grass, and if I recall, we asked whether the option of doing artificial turf might work instead of grass for water conservation. Could you please address that?
Yeah, and that, the answer to that question is a yes. Yeah, and that, the answer to that question is a yes. So, we will only permit artificial turf. And I apologize for the grand, the grand nature of some of the plants. They will all comply with, with the regulations on landscaping. They will be drought tolerant. I think our animators went a little crazy on the, the plants there.
On behalf of the city of Prescott, we thank you.
Susan?
The standard lease for the projects, will that be one year?
Yes. Yes.
So, then, if they don't like the noise, they're free to leave after a year?
That's correct. And, and people in their lease, they can leave whenever they want, but when they do leave, there's a stipulation that says, "Hey, you do need to cover the cancellation fee so we can come in and touch the house back up and do all the things before we bring somebody else in." So, even though someone's signing a one-year lease, there is a stipulation that they can get out if they, for some reason, just hate the place, which we don't, we don't want that to ever happen, but we can't.
And what will the cancellation fee be?
I don't know yet, because we don't even have our bids to build this yet with, with, we're kind of going through this. We're first here to see if we can get acceptance, then we keep going with architectural and all the engineering, then we bid it. So, I don't, I don't have the answer to that question yet, on what the fee is. It's not, it's not some crazy draconian fee, but it's, it's something to protect the business that if somebody one day just says, "You know, I, I agreed for a year, and I'm going to leave." There is a fee that, that covers us on the cost to have to let them leave and touch it all up, and then get it ready for the next customer.
So, really, the only difference with that last one there is the fee. The last item where it said, you know, "No charge," so anybody can leave before the year's lease is up, but they would pay, pay a penalty fee. Do you have a rough, rough, rough idea?
My, my problem with saying rough is I'm either going to guess too high or too low. And I know right now, this is, I'm in a position where I don't want to mislead anybody, all right? I'd rather just say, "I can get back to you on that one." But, but I know that any construction lender is going to say, "Hey, we're, we want you to have long-term leases." Great Street Company, they want that. So, when we say, "Oh, and they can leave in three months," that, that causes concern right out of the gate. So, that's the only one I'd say, if we don't have to. And, and just in defense of what we're up to, we have people that have invested in Deepwell, you know, they plan to stay there for the rest of their life, hopefully, in very nice houses, and this is simply just a rental community. So, I, I feel comfortable that no one's going to feel like they're, they're trapped there. I mean, I, and, and we're very careful about how we, we educate a prospect before they make a decision. And there's a lot of places they can rent in Prescott. So, they're going to, they're not going to come in blindly and just sign a, sign a lease. It's been our experience.
Any other questions? Tom, you have another?
Yeah, I do. Follow, I'm still a little confused as to what it is that we're supposed to be voting on here. When, if we follow the recommendation that you have to, just to approve this, that's moved to approve, which that's not a motion, the, the additional airport comments, I mean, some of these things are required simply by the FAA.
Right.
I mean, that's just simple requirements. Are we including the things like the airport disclosure documents being part of the rental agreement, which is a good idea, but are we agreeing to all these things? So, do we have to stipulate that perhaps the rental agreement is not part of this? Or, I'm really confused, this is, was not in our packet?
It was not in your packet. The, the approval could be something as simple as the motion that I've shown you, moved to approve. You could add stipulations from the list that was presented to you by the airport director. You could say, "Subject to the stipulations agreed to by the airport and Great Streets," and make that stipulation list part of your recommendation. You're not required to make it part of your recommendation. It, it is really, truly up to you to decide. If you're more comfortable simply saying the site design meets zoning requirements and looks like it's going to be a feasible project, it can be built, it meets the requirements of access, you can stop there and just make the motion to approve.
And then, this basically goes, and council will...
It's going to go to council anyway.
Well, it's going to go to council, but we need to make a recommendation, one way or another.
I, I think council will appreciate it, knowing that there are agreed stipulations, that you've considered those stipulations, and if you want to include them, to include them, I think that does help council with their decision.
I, I understand that. So, I guess, out of these additional airport comments, it's my understanding, I think the first two are required, I believe. Actually, the site plan be in the zone, it's not part of the AVO. The only thing that's required is the first one, is that correct? Which of the others ones? Dr. Sabata could probably answer those questions.
The FAA Form 7460 process is a requirement. The site plan item on Impact Zone 4 was an agreed-upon decision that was made so that we did not seek acquisition and appraisal of that land. We had mutually agreed that it would only be uninhabited, otherwise, we were going to seek that as part of our appraisals. So, that is an understanding that we had agreed to before the project moved forward. The height restrictions for natural growth, that's actually a grant assurance, and that's a requirement under our federal assurances. The disclosure docs are actually part of the navigation easement, and is an attachment. So, the first four have basis in, I think, very, the, the last one, when I spoke to him earlier this week, you would, we, you said it couldn't have a time limit, you, it had to be the first three months. It sounds like you've had additional discussions that make that prohibitive. I think you've made a really good effort to try to do everything you could. I mean, if we just go ahead and agree to the first four conditions, and we would like to look at the disclosure documents and collaborate with you to make sure that it's proper, I think we can agree to that, is those four conditions it moves forward with, if you feel comfortable with that.
We love that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Jim?
This is a question for George. George, is it possible that we can vote for two things today? Could we vote for the site plan approval, separate from voting for this?
You can. The caution against it would be, the site plan moves forward for council's consideration, and if you believe that these additional stipulations are related to and connected to the site plan, then I would make a single motion, including all of it. So, a motion to approve with the first four stipulations, we will package that, and it goes to council as, as a, as a unit, a, a, a single motion by you is clearer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public like to make a comment? If not, the item is up for a potential motion. Do I hear one?
George, could you put that motion back up there? I'll make a motion to move to recommend approval of site plan SITE 22-004, South Ranch Apartments, per the site plan submitted, and per the first four comments on the airport comments section.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Jim Kloszuski, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, second, further discussion? Yes, no discussion, sir?
Commissioner Gambogi?
Approved.
Commissioner Graham?
Approve.
Commissioner Kloszuski?
Approve.
Commissioner Riley?
Approved.
Commissioner Whiting?
Approved.
Commissioner Michaelman?
Approve.
Next item on the agenda is PLN 23-002, a revised preliminary plat for South Ranch, Unit 2, location APN 102-05-036G, parcel size 18 acres, zoning SPC, owner Ash Dorn LLC. George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission. This is also something you've seen before, but in the form of the original preliminary plat. This is a proposal to change that original preliminary plat. The portion of the plat that you saw included a much larger area than I've highlighted here. This is just one of several units of this subdivision, and this particular unit, yeah, sorry, I've got these out of order. This particular unit is split into two phases. There's an A and a B. So, it's Unit 2, there's an A at the south half and a B at the north half. The area is, was originally laid out with approximate 45-foot-wide lots. The lots are typical of the remainder of the subdivision. The preliminary plat had many, if not most, lots that size. And the request today is actually to look at Unit 2A and reducing some of the lot sizes, most of the lot sizes in 2A, from 45-foot width to 35-foot width. That does result in additional lots. It results in 12 additional lots within the subdivision. Because it results in additional lots, it requires a review and a revision of the preliminary plat, which is why it's back before you today. A little bit closer look at part of it, just to show you the dimensions, the lots are 35 feet wide, rather than 45, and it increases the number of lots within this unit from 26 to 37. The overall Unit 2 increase, it goes from 96 to 108. The type of lot line, or, excuse me, the type of lots that are proposed, the 35-foot widths, are not uncommon in Deepwell Ranch. The very first phase of Deepwell Ranch was originally called Antelope Crossings, and it's changed names so many times, I'm not sure what it is today. The lots were basically between 45-foot as a wide lot and 35-foot as the narrower lot throughout that, that section of the subdivision. So, this is not an unusual request from a subdivider's standpoint. It does have some effects which we want to talk about, and I, again, apologize, my, I got my slides out of order. The area in question is within impact zones. We talked about those same impact zones, at least one of those same impact zones, with the prior project. Impact Zone 4, as you see that runs across the page towards the, the left, lower left-hand side of the page, is the same Impact Zone 4 that affected the South Ranch rental community that you just dealt with. There's a little piece of a Zone 4 that's from the offset runway at the airport. There are two parallel runways at the airport, and this is the shorter one that's offset a little bit. That's the end of Zone 4. That specific section actually affects lots in the subdivision, but they're within Unit 2B, not within the area that's being changed today. So, the boundary of that is just approximately to the south of the dashed line that I've got cutting across that separates the two units, 2A and 2B. The proposal, again, is to increase the number of lots and to narrow those lots in 2A to 35 feet in width. Everything else remains the same, the street remains the same, the street width remains the same. The areas that are impacted are just the residential lots with this revision of plat. And we did get some comments regarding the noise contours. The area is within a 60-DNL contour. There are a lot of aircraft overflights, just like the other project you looked at, only this one is closer. It is something that needs to be taken into consideration. This development has already agreed to and includes many of the same requirements of notification and navigation easements that have been applied throughout Deepwell Ranch. So, they are subject to those same things. And I'm going to go back to this one and ask if, Robin wants, do you have any additional information you want to talk about on, on this one? You're welcome, you're welcome to.
Did you have the additional comments? I don't. Oh, did you want me to debate the additional comments? Okay. So, there were additional comments that were supposed to be a separate slide, and I'll just go ahead and go through those. We, we are concerned that by the time this gets to final plat, that if these comments are not on the final plat, that there will be omissions and disclosure that we're concerned about. So, we are requesting, all disclosures and easements must fully comply with the Deepwell Ranch Master Plan and Development Agreement, and the following needs to be provided to the city. We've asked for the proposed disclosure and easement documents that are provided so that we can see them. And then, we also want to make sure that the proposed CCNRs contain the necessary documents as per the Deepwell Ranch Master Plan Agreement. The timing for document delivery is important to us. Does the individual receive those disclosure documents in a way that they can make an educated decision prior to a financial impact from, say, cancellation of a contract? So, we've asked them to provide that information to us. In regards to the OEI Splay Protection, there actually is a note that needs to go on the plat map. No structure or planting at mature growth that will exceed 10 feet in heights shall be permitted in tract AA, and I don't think it shows up there. George, tract AA? That's the tract at the end there. That was agreed to, that the only thing that can be in there are low-profile sports equipment, such as soccer goals, because that is in the airline OEI Splay. Utility poles, lighting standards, or city or state traffic signs, and other similar uses are permitted under the discretion of the city of Prescott. We did ask that an additional plat note be added in, a notice of noise and navigation disclosure on the plat map, and I have specific wording here that's similar to previous notices on previous phases of Deepwell Ranch, Saddlewood and Westwood. And also, a height restriction for natural growth. Applicant notes provide evidence to confirm that the vegetative growth will be appropriately limited, possibly in the landscape plan that's coming up. Owners shall select height-limited species to include in structures to homeowners in the Common Area Association to ensure that landscaping heights do not exceed FAA-approved structure obstruction level, and that's in perpetuity. So, these items are additional requirements, and I'm sorry, it's not on a slide.
That those additional requirements are for the final?
Prior to approval of the final plat. And what we wanted to make sure is, this is a preliminary, so by the time it gets to final plat, we don't want it said that, you know, if it's in substantial conformance and this wasn't discussed, that we understand that substantial conformance with the, the preliminary would include with these additional items that are required under the existing Deepwell Ranch Master Plan.
So, these comments are advisory, to make sure the applicant knows that when the final plat is submitted, we're going to be looking for all of those things. They do not need to be a condition of a preliminary plat, and, and would not, in many cases, be something that we would have at a preliminary plat level. CCNRs are not something that typically are developed at preliminary plat. They're developed in between preliminary approval and final.
Questions for staff?
I have a question.
Certainly.
In our last proposal, we had a series of five comments, four of which we included in our...
In, in the motion, correct.
In our motion, thank you. Robin just read off a series of comments, and I'm, I'm a little unclear, are we going to include them in this motion, or wait for the final plat?
The comments that the airport director just read you are advisory to the applicant so that they are aware that that's what we will look for at the final plat. So, they're not typically something that we would have at a preliminary plat.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have a question on this. Planning and zoning spent a lot of time on the AVO, and we ended up recommending the AVO to the city council. Now, I understand council has not made a final decision yet, so it's not into effect. But, this particular item would be in, part of it, the property would be in violation of AVO on that little zone section there, because of that one runway.
For the Impact Zone 4, right.
Now, the fact that this particular development had already been approved, and what it's doing is basically coming back and modifying the original approval, I don't want to have a situation where we say, "We ought to have the AVO, we ought to have this," and then we come back and say, "Oh, no, we don't need it anymore." By the fact, if we do proceed on this, and the fact it's basically adjusting a prior approval, we're not really saying the AVO is not good.
No, absolutely not. If you recall, there was a great deal of discussion about your motion to recommend the AVO to council, whether or not to include the Deepwell Ranch area within that recommendation. And if I recall correctly, you, you didn't include the Deepwell Ranch area in your recommendation. That was something for council to resolve through negotiations with Deepwell that are, to my knowledge, still underway, still going on. Recommending a change like this does not in any way negate or obviate the benefits of the AVO. Planning staff is strongly in favor of council taking action on it when it's time.
Tom? I have a question, George. With the additional 12 units, that's not going to impact utilities or things like that, so there's really no impact in terms of, you know, how many cars a day and things like that and all that kind of stuff? There's no impact for that? Is that...
It's kind of a minimal impact on the number of cars. We have 12 additional units. Whatever traffic impact that comes from 12 additional units compared to hundreds of units that are part of the subdivision is going to be minimal. Water sewer systems are oversized and designed to accommodate additional growth in areas and changes in use. So, no, I do not expect any infrastructure plans to change as a result of this.
Okay. Follow-up question? Follow-up to that now, if with this, all we are doing in this one, this is already an approved preliminary plat. We're just simply voting to allow the revision of the existing preliminary plat to include smaller lot widths. Is that correct?
And the 12 additional lots, correct. That is correct.
So this is already an approved preliminary plat with the 45 lots?
It is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Although water is not our purvey, this does increase water usage.
There is a separate agreement with Deepwell Ranch on water, and additional units would reduce the available water from Deepwells. I hate to use the typical terms, but Deepwells pool of water, so it will be accommodated by Deepwell Ranch water.
Now, just frame a reference. The development up there, is it Deerwood? Deer?
Saddlewood?
Saddlewood, thank you. How wide are the lots at Saddlewood?
They were a mixture of 35 and 45, and I believe there are a few larger ones at points where they are cul-de-sacs, they widen out, similar to the site design here.
Any other questions for staff? If not, would the applicant like to make any comments?
Chair, members of the Commission, for your record, Lindsay Shuby with the law firm of Gammage &amp; Burnham. Just want to let you know, we are aware of these conditions, and they will be part of our final plat. So just stating that for the record. George did such fabulous job on the presentation, I don't have anything else to add. So just have, if you have any questions, I'm here, but we are aware of these. We'll address all of the disclosures as part of our final plat.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, ma'am. Anybody from the public like to make a comment? No one from the public making a comment? Would I, is there someone who want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Tom Riley. I move to approve, recommend, move to recommend approval of PLN 23-002, a revised preliminary plat of South Ranch Unit 2.
We have motion on the floor. Is there a second to the motion?
I second it. James Whiting.
All right. Motion and second. Any further discussion? If no discussion, Sarah?
Commissioner Gamboji.
Approved.
Commissioner Graham.
Approve.
Commissioner Klosuski.
Approved.
Commissioner Riley.
Approved.
Commissioner Whiting.
Approved.
Commissioner Michaelman.
Approved.
Passes 6-0.
Next item on the agenda is SUP 23-002, a special use permit allowing for the construction of 100-foot wireless tower next to the existing water tank, exceeding the allowed height limitation of 35 feet for the zoning district. Location APN 800-20-034S, 3599 Williamson Valley Road. Zoning rural estate, 2-acre, RE 2-acre. Applicant is Smart Link Communications LLC. Tammy?
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission, Tammy Dewitt, Community Planner of the City of Prescott. The property is located at the southeast intersection of Pioneer Parkway in Williamson Valley. The current property is owned by the State Land Department, and the applicant is getting a lease from the State Land Department for the proposed location. The proposed location is north of the existing water tank on the property, and there's also a communication already on site. There's already access to the property off of Pioneer Parkway and utilities such as electric for the proposed use before you. As stated, that this is outside the airport influence area. The applicant had, did discuss with the Airport Director this morning about the possibility of putting a light on top of this tower if it is approved, and that he agreed to that, the red blinking light just to notify any, because it is a training area. But it is a real estate, 2-acre, it's residential, 2-acre lot sizes, and it is in the middle of the subject property. So this is a 204-acre property owned by the State Land Department. To the east is a 79-acre BLM property, which is federal property. To the north, we have, across the other side of Pioneer Parkway, is 225 acres of state land. And then to the west, on the other side, Williamson Valley Road is also state land. To the south, we do have a residential development. The closest property line from the water, that's from the water tank, was 1,000 feet. And then there's a 400-foot open space buffer to the south, that's in their subdivision as open space. We do have two letters of opposition that were given to you this morning, and they're two noted there on the site plan there. So they're about 1,800 feet from the proposed location of the cell tower. Here's the site plan. So this is going on the north side, the downside of the water tank. So the water tank is on the other side of the hill from the neighborhood. There's about a 400-foot elevation change between the development and the top of the hill. Water tank is on the other side of the hill, and this is further down the hill. It is about 400 feet from the fence around the water tank. And it is a 30 by 30 lease area, which is pretty common, and that still holds all their compound and their equipment in the tower. So the applicant did provide photosims, which we do require. And these are two viewpoints, two off of Pioneer Parkway, and then one from inside the development, the closest road they can get up to. So the first proposal that was proposed was for a 100-foot monopine. So this is what the rendering was supposed to, it's going to look like if you choose this option. So when we saw the photosims, the pine tree kind of stands out a lot, 100-foot tree there, due to the tree foliage makes it stand out a little bit more. So this is the one off of Pioneer Parkway. Here's the second one off Pioneer Parkway, kind of where the trailhead, the entrance into the scenic area is, and you can see the water tank at that viewpoint. And this is what they're proposing the tree would possibly look like. And this is from the neighborhood, the closest point they can get to. And it's there on the right top there. Then staff asked them to propose a monopole if they can give us renderings for that, just to see the comparative difference of the visual impact of it. So this is from the one point on Williamson Valley. So on the right-hand side is with the proposed tower. And then here it is off of the same location with the, on the right with the monopole. And from this view, it looks like it's about the same height as the existing communication tower, but because it's further down the hill. So when you kind of look at the renderings at this angle, it looks like it's about the same height as the existing communication tower there. And then this is a view from the neighborhood with the monopole. And this is why we actually asked them, because as you can see, there's very minimal impact, and it can be painted a light gray color to blend into the background, which would be still considered a stealth tower. So this is the RF propagation map that they proposed to show you what the coverage would be like. It's the one there in the middle, kind of the top right-left tower. That's the, that this proposed tower. So the red is the good signal, the green and yellow and white and blue are like low areas with very little coverage. So as you can see, up north, Williamson Valley, that there's a lot of blue and yellow, and then just to the south, there's the little pockets of blue and green. But with this tower, you can see that it definitely improves that coverage in the area. And this will connect up to help improve the data capacity for these existing towers, and also to the tower north off of Williamson Valley Road, which is also an AT&amp;T tower. So some ways that cell towers aid in community fire safety, we've been seeing this with the fires going on in California and Hawaii, and it's become a lot of discussion regionally in the area in regards, because this is national infrastructure. Cell towers are considered national infrastructure. So they help provide communication capabilities for the public to reach police, firefighters, and first responders in emergency situations through cellphone use. Towers enable coordination on the ground as cruise battle fires, enable emergency alerts and evacuation notices to be sent to residents in harm's way. The notification through the county, through the sheriff's office, is all through cellphones. So if you don't have cell coverage, you won't get the alerts. Allow residents to call 911 for help if trapped by fires. Towers maintain access even when other infrastructure is compromised. Support use of wireless technology like apps and messaging by firefighters to share real-time data and updates. Reliable data speeds are critical. Maintain connectivity to weather and surveillance systems, tracking the fire's progress. Connectivity aids monitoring and forecasting. Lack of tower redundancy makes networks more prone to disruption from fires undermining response. And by way of example, dead zones in rural areas impacted by California's fires have meant failures delivering evacuation orders via cellphones. And it's similar here, that, like I said, the sheriff's is all done through cellphones. So what authority does the city have to regulate cell towers? This is always the one that always, is the hard one. So for, whoop, whoop, sorry. The Federal Communications Act of 1996 and the Prescott Land Development Code. So per the SCC, there are two purposes for the Telecommunication Act, Telecommunication Act of 1996. One is to promote competition and reduce regulation in order to secure lower prices and higher-quality services for American telecommunications consumers, and encourage the rapid deployment of new communication technologies. And two, to preserve the authority of state and local governments over zoning and land use matters, except in limited circumstances. And then the city's land development codes also govern cell towers. Basically, if it meets the height of the zoning district, they're allowed by rights, and if they exceed that height, they have to go through this process to allow for the additional height. So what we are allowed to look at is the height of the tower and what it looks like. That's the only thing we are allowed to look at for cell towers. There are five federally imposed limitations per the FCC Act. Derogulation, placement, construction, and/or modification of telecom facilities may not unnecessarily discriminate among providers of functionality equivalent services, cannot favor one provider or another. Derogulation of the placement, construction, and/or modification of telecom facilities should not have the effect of prohibiting the provision of wireless services. The local jurisdiction, City of Prescott, must act in a reasonable period of time in approving or denying its cell tower application. So we have been working with the applicant to meet all our stock clot requirements. The local jurisdiction, City of Prescott, may not regulate the placement, construction, and/or modification of telecom facilities on the basis of environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, to the extent such emissions comply with FCC regulations. They're the ones that monitor that and keep track of it. Any decision to deny an application to place, construct, and/or modify telecom facilities must be in writing and justified by substantial evidence. What the applicant must show per our land development code is that the proposed cell tower closes a significant gap in its own coverage in the least intrusive way possible. With the 100-foot tower, that allows for two other carriers to co-locate on it. So we do always recommend the higher tower, so we don't see a bunch of towers for each carrier. We have one tower that can hold three other, three carriers. A meaningful comparison of various sites, that the proposed site is the best available to address the coverage gap, that the proposed site is the best technologically feasible site, and that the application complies with the city's land development code and ordinances. They also, applicant can also, must also show lack of available and technology feasible alternatives, and is probably to ask, to study alternative sites, alternative designs, and alternative technologies. We did ask them to submit the monopole, so we had a comparison, and you give you guys options on your approval. Exemptions per the land development code, towers, antennas, and wireless communication and related facilities that are exempt from the requirements of this section include those not exceeding maximum height and setback requirements of their underlying zoning district, and used solely for transmissions by a single user or other otherwise restricted within that zoning district, but not limited to amateur revenues and devices necessary for use of subscription, and those that are owned, operated, or controlled by a government The SUP process allows for council approval of tower heights and access of the zoning district. So in this district, it allows for a 35-foot height, and they're asking, requesting a 100-foot wireless tower, which we require approval by city council through the SUP process. And so we have here three recommended actions to choose from. So one, to move, to recommend approval SUP 23-002 to allow for a 100-foot monopole, or move to recommend approval for a 100-foot camouflage as a pine tree, or recommend denial. So that concludes my presentation. I'm free to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here.
Questions for staff?
I have a few questions, Tammy. Just frame a reference. We put a similar-looking tree tower on Willow Creek. How tall was that?
I believe that was 170 feet.
70 feet?
78.
So 22 feet, this one's 22 feet higher.
Yes.
Now, let's do a little math. The proposed cellphone tower is lower in elevation than the water tank, correct?
The base of it will be a little bit lower. It's on the downward side of the water tank.
Any idea how much?
Let's see, there are 20-foot contours. We get back to that site plan, probably maybe about 100 feet.
Below the water tank?
Yes.
And is the water tank at the top of the hill?
No, it's on the other downward side of the top.
So between the water tank and the antenna is the peak of the hill?
No, the peak of the hill is south, southwest.
So it's south of, so the water tank is not at the highest point?
Correct. It's on the other side of the hill from the neighborhood, on the north side of the hill from the neighborhood.
And how far did you say it is below the water tank?
It's about 400 feet from, there's about 400 feet between that fence line around the water tank to that lease area.
Yes, but how far, in terms of elevation, how much lower is it?
One, two, three, about 100, 120 feet approximately from the contours.
So is it possible to see the antenna from the development south of there?
Some of the area possibly not. If they can't see the water tank, they probably won't be able to see the tower. So, but the one area to the, to the north, the southeast, will probably be able to see a little bit of it, but as shown from the renderings, right here, this is from that one southeast portion, the close where the road goes up to Tais. So that, I mean, that kind of shows the pine tree. And then if we look at the monopole, whoop, sorry, and then there'd be the monopole on the right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim, do you have a question?
Jim Klosuski, yes. I noticed earlier in the proposal, it suggested that they needed to provide alternative sites or to demonstrate those alternative sites. Have they done so?
There's other, I mean, I'd have to defer to the applicant, how they came up with the site. They do their math and their configuration from where other towers are. They do their math and their configuration from where other towers are, and they figure out where the best connectivity, because it has to communicate with the other towers, and to fill the gap they're trying to fill. But this is actually, if you look at it from a planning standpoint, it's in the middle of a 204-acre parcel. It's not close to the residences, like we've seen with a couple other, another tower you saw. There's about 1,800 feet to the closest neighbor. So this is, from our standpoint, it's the type of locations we would like to see the cell towers going into.
Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Tom Riley. Has the first responders, police, fire, sheriff, have they experienced communications issues in these areas that are going to be addressed?
I reached out to the fire, and I didn't hear back. She's very busy, and so we didn't hear from anybody else.
So we don't know if there's a communication gap or not, do we?
But according to their maps that they provide, this shows where the low areas, where there are possible disruptions, and not as much. A lot of it's dealing with data capacity. So if there is an emergency, everyone's trying to reach out. It kind of ties down the lines, and if you don't have that data capacity increased, it'll make it even worse. So this is going to help with that data capacity issue to the north and in some of these lower areas to the south.
Thank you for that explanation. That helps answer my question.
Other questions?
I have a comment for Tom. When I first moved here, I had a friend up in Williamson Valley at Granite Oaks, I think. And I had AT&amp;T. I've had AT&amp;T for 20, 30 years. Because unlike Verizon, AT&amp;T allowed you to change a SIM card. So I could go to China, change a SIM card, go to India, change a SIM card. And my phone bill went from $6,000 a month to $1,000 a month. But I finally succumbed and switched to Verizon because they had coverage up there. AT&amp;T has never had coverage up Williamson Valley.
I'd like to add to that comment. I spent 20 years living in Granite Oaks before moving in town, and we always had a problem with dead spots up and down Williamson Valley, north of Pioneer Parkway and including our neighborhood. When we first moved in there, I went with T-Mobile. They said, yes, you have coverage based on our map. When I got there, there was, closest coverage I had was three miles south of Granite Oaks, and they had to take my phone back. And we moved out two years ago, and not much has changed, in my opinion, as far as the dead zones up Williamson Valley Road.
Then the question that I would have is, will this area cover the Granite Oaks? Which is not part of the city's purview, it's county.
It does go up the north, and there's also a cell tower up on Outer Loop in Williamson Valley, across from the general store, up on the hill. That's also AT&amp;T, so this will help fill that gap between there.
That's the one that's disguised as a pine tree?
On top of the hill.
Up on top of the mesa.
Yeah, yeah, I did that one.
Cleverly.
Tammy, I think in the information, there was a comment made that there's an existing tower up in that area.
On this site, there's a communication tower next to the water tank.
How tall is that tower?
Yeah, I'm not sure. We don't have that information, because it's a government tower, so we don't, we didn't, we don't have the information for that. Been looking at the renderings, the closest point from Williamson Valley, because this tower is a little bit downhill from that one, it looks like it's about the same height from that perspective.
So being a government tower, the private industry could not use that tower too?
Correct.
Okay, thank you then. Before we go to the applicant, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rusin attending on that. Would the applicant like to make a comment?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Sawyer. I'm with Smart Link, representing ATT. Do I need to bring this up? Sorry, my height again. I'd just like to respond to the fire portion of these questions. One of the main technological advances that we're doing here is what's called the First Net. And that is a combination of the government and AT&amp;T together to add technology to this tower for first responders. 9/11, fire, it's all going to tie into all the rest of the towers going north, going west, going south, to make sure that first responders are keyed in immediately to any kind of emergency. So really, that's the main focus here. It's also data and coverage, your phone coverage, but the main thing is the First Net. And that's kind of a big deal, because, you know, the issue always comes up with these types of things with emergencies. And as you can see from the map, the coverage is not perfect. So that's really one of the main things I wanted to lay out to you. So, and if you have any questions, I'm ready to go.
Questions for the applicant, Susan?
Susan Graham. What is the lowest height that would be effective for this tower?
In other words, lowering it from 100 feet? I would say in order to add two carriers, probably somewhere around 85 feet, we would have to do some configuration with the lease area, you know, expand or contract. But I would say, just off the top of my head, probably 85 feet would be minimum here, just for the coverage area that you see on this map. Because we want to add, obviously Verizon and T-Mobile, you know, the three big ones to it. And then anybody else that might want to, it needs a lower RAD center for coverage, we could add. So it maybe could be up to, a municipality could add some microwaves or whatever they need onto it also. Or, you know, the city could add some things there too, if needed. So that's really the reason for the 100 feet, is to add as many, not to have other towers all around that we'd have to keep coming back to you time and time again to get, you know, approved or denied. So that's really the reason for the 100 feet, is to add as many people as we can onto the tower.
And Tammy, with the 15, we're lowering it by 15 feet, would that prevent more people from the subdivision not seeing it?
I can't answer that.
Not sure about that. We'd have to do a study on that.
Ted?
Do you know where the closest Verizon tower is?
No, sir, I do not off the top of my head, no. I think that Sun State Tower we were discussing, Tammy, it has Verizon on it, the one, the pine tree, the 78-foot pine tree, that might be.
I believe that was Verizon Tower.
Yeah, okay.
So that'd be Prescott Lakes and Willow Lake Road, that pine tire, pine tree there.
I believe that's the closest Verizon.
Other questions?
Oh, yeah, and there's also another one on Willow Creek Road.
And Abaya Judd on Williamson Valley Road.
And, oh, yeah, and at the school, at Williamson Valley Road, and Iron. Yeah, Abaya Judd, school.
By bringing it down 15 feet, would that reduce the number of potential other users of that tower, and how much?
Yes, sir, it would. I don't know the exact amount, but it would, it would potentially reduce that, because they're going to need line of sight. And the more height they get, the more line of sight, and the better their signal goes out, obviously. The lower they go on the tower, the, there's a potential for blockage of the signal. So the more height, the better, obviously. So, yeah, that's really the bottom line. We just don't know the lowest RAD center, if we lowered it, the lowest RAD center. We have no idea if that would work for another carrier or not, at this point.
So if it went down to 85, that would work for you, but maybe not anybody else?
Yes, sir.
At 100 feet, it would work for you and how many others? Two?
Two, at least. And we can also squeeze in some, like I said, some municipality stuff up there, because they're small, small antennas. So they don't need as much separation, vertical separation. So.
Other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak concerning this?
She has.
Sarah will call out the person to come up, okay?
I'll call your name. You have three minutes. I'll give you a 30-second warning. Richard Loakes.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Richard Loakes. I'm currently a resident of Southview, right over the hill from the proposed tower, and...
Excuse me, sir, we need your address, too.
My address is 1494 Southview Drive. And I am currently a member of the Board of Directors of Southview, serving as Vice President. And I oppose this intrusive tower, because if you notice the one on Willow Lake, it, Willow Lake, I'm sorry, it really stands out. It doesn't look like any of the other trees in the neighborhood. It's only 78 feet. This one will stand up beyond any tree or shrubbery in the area and be very intrusive. That's, that's my feelings about the way it looks. Also, I have great cellphone service. I get emergency alerts on kidnappings, or fires, or anything done in the area from the Fire Department, the Police Department, or whatever the communication is done to the residents of Southview. And I just think this is, you know, exceeding 200 feet over the city's recommended height for, 200%, I'm sorry, over the city's recommended tower height. And if you, like I said, you look at the one on Willow Lake, it stands out amongst everything. You know, it's very intrusive. So I would recommend against this. I have a petition signed by residents of my area that are, again, oppose this height of the cell tower. So I thank you for your time, and do I give her the petitions?
Thank you, sir. Next, Sarah.
Dale Storrs.
Hello. My name is Dale Storrs, also 1494 Southview Drive. You're very limited on what you can deny this tower on. It's pretty amazing to me. I look at this and I say, this hillside, and that's what it is, it's not a mountain, it's a hillside. You've all driven up Pioneer Parkway, it's a hill. There's our water tower, there's another, you say it's 78 feet, okay? You're talking a 35-foot zoned, and who comes up with that? Obviously, somebody on the planning committee, an engineer at one time, determined that the height limit for this hill, and that's, again, what it is, the height limit should be 35 feet. Now you've got a cellphone company who says, I need 100 feet, I need a 100-foot tower, I'll throw, I'll put a couple other people on there as well. 100 feet is ridiculous. So again, you only have a couple of things that you can deny this on. You're very limited. But one of the things, we're actually lucky, two of the things, I think, can justify denying this. B, and again, this is under your special use review criteria. B, compatible with surrounding area. The proposed site plan, circulation plan, and schematic architectural design shall be harmonious with the character of the surrounding area with respect to scale, height, landscaping, lock, coverage density. Right there, harmonious to the hillside. No, this is not harmonious, not whatsoever. It's not to scale, it's not to height. How are we going from 35 feet to 100 feet? So you say that, hey, we'll let Verizon, and we'll let T-Mobile come on. Well, the interesting thing is, those are the top three, I agree with you there, but those aren't the only ones. So is it Pandora's Box? Okay, we're going to let you have a 100-foot tower, we're going to make the exception. Well, in addition to Verizon, T-Mobile, and AT&amp;T, there's a whole list of other cellphone companies out there that could say, hey, we want to be in the area too, and we want our own 100-foot tower. Are we going to become a cellphone compound? You know, in addition to our 100-foot tower, you've got to remember, they're also putting a 30-by-30-foot compound for the equipment. In addition to that, they're putting a 20-foot wide road from Pioneer Parkway up to the tower. They've changed the entire hillside.
30 seconds.
This is much more than being harmonious. This is not harmonious. This is the opposite of harmonious. I urge you to deny this. It's Pandora's Box, and it will not be conducive to the area. The other quick thing I have to say, there is concern when we have over 800 flights going out of our airport. We know that the majority of those flights are students. We only have three actual commercial flights. We have students lying around. I know you said that...
Time's up.
I know that you said that it's not in the area. I'd hate to see a mistake by a student. And having lights on top of the tower, that's a whole nother thing. Again, not harmonious. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Sarah?
Okay, my name's Ken Golner. I'm at 1, yep, Ken Golner, 110 North Summit Ave in Prescott. I also oppose this cell tower. I agree with the previous comments. I'm with a group called Yavapai for Safe Tech. And for one thing, I'd like to know if the committee realizes that the requirement for a gap in coverage is actually only for making cell calls. When the law was established, it's not related to data. I would like to know if the maps that they're giving for gap in coverage specify or differentiate gap in coverage for cell usage versus gap in coverage for data. Also, if that map is actually related to what is typically used, which is a simulated map, or is it actual measurements that have been tested and certified for gaps in coverage? Sorry, excuse me for once. Also, it was mentioned, I didn't get the full statement, but on the presentation, it mentioned considering alternative technology. Why don't we also consider things like landline, which I know it seems like it's a bit outdated, but it is more reliable in many situations? Also, fiber optic, which is an up-and-coming technology, which should also be considered for use for things like emergency response. Anyway, so that's, that's pretty much what I want to say. Oh, and yes, the proposed tower, the pictures seem like they were a bit far away, but if you actually look at a picture of where the current tower is from, from the fence line, it's actually, and also, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that an additional 20 feet can potentially be added if the 100-foot is approved. Now, 100 feet to 120 feet is significantly higher than the current tower, and so looking at it from just off the side of the road is quite a bit higher than it appears to be from the pictures that were given. So that should also be considered. All right, and that's basically what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sarah?
Heidi Remachol. Good morning. Heidi Remachol, and my, I'm a local Prescott Realtor with Realty Executives, Arizona Territory, in the Prescott office on 113 West Goodwin Street. And I just want you to know, cell tower and antenna installations and emissions are a concern to many citizens and residents in all the Quad Cities. I deal with buyers and sellers in Prescott, Longview, Southview, all over. I, along with Deb Miller and others, contributed to the FOIA request, along with being public record. It is vital for us to be able to review and respond to the FOIA request answers before any vote can take place. So please take that into consideration to allow a second hearing or continuance of this. As a local Realtor, I'm especially focused on the cell tower placement, the effects on citizen or residence, privacy, security, and property values, along with environmental preservation, safety, health, and well-being. The answers to the... The answers to the FOIA request would help residents know that their protections are a priority to the local officials who serve them. In many cases, the zoning codes and ordinances, hopefully protective ordinances, need updating to handle the continuing application process. We depend on city mayor, council members, and planning and zoning committees to work together and follow their oath of office in upholding the Arizona State Constitution and the U.S. Constitution. So I do oppose this cell tower extremely. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sarah, anybody else?
Deb Miller.
I'm Deb Miller, 1062 Yavapai Hills in Prescott. I have submitted a FOIA request asking for information related to this special permit, special use permit. To date, I've not received a response. It would have been very helpful to have had this presentation so that we, as informed citizens, could have had more time to evaluate, confirm, and respond as informed citizens. So in acting as an informed citizen, I require this requested FOIA information to research, verify on this information, give my informed feedback. There's several people here, and those that couldn't be here, that have contributed to this request. The answers will be shared with them. Your response to my request is so that we can all give it due diligence and give informed feedback. It is part of public record, it should be reviewed by you before voting on this. There's a lot of questions in it. And it also has questions related to the zoning code. So should my response when we get the answers and others' responses. Therefore, I am requesting an adjournment or a continuance so that we all have time to review and respond to FOIA request information. We've had no response from the first responders. You need that response before you vote. There's been no formal review on other sites. There's been no formal review on other technologies. This is all part of what is required, and what Tammy was saying was required. And if you reduce the feet, how is it gonna reduce the coverage? Everyone that wants all this coverage, how's that gonna reduce it? There's no information on that yet. I want safe technology, not no technology. That's my stand. So I do ask, I can go into, I have so many other questions for you, it's more than three minutes. Why does the existing 34, 35-foot tower not provide the current service? Why is that? Why do you need the 100-foot tower versus the height? I don't know the difference with that. Define significant gap in coverage. Define in the least intrusive way. You know, the applicant needs to show a lack of available and technologically feasible alternatives to its proposed cell tower. However, I would assert if they don't provide that alternative themselves, if alternatives are available, then those alternatives should be explored through other applicants or providers. So I have so much more to say.
30 seconds.
I would request that a continuance so that we all have time to review and respond. I request this continuance for two weeks or a month from now or longer if it is felt that the response to my FOIA request will take longer. We need more time as informed citizens to be able to address this incredibly important issue. I am on, I'm on the very top of Yavapai Hills Drive. I can see-
That's time.
-the tower over on Table Mountain. So I believe that a lot of the information that's prevented here needs to be vetted by us as informed citizens, and I request a continuance. Will you please address that continuance request now? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sarah?
Denise Allen.
Hi. My name's Denise Allen. I live at 601 Thunderbird Drive in Prescott. And I was going to finish reading her statement, but she said it all. So I would just like to add that I've been fighting against cell towers and the idea of 5G for several years now. We were up in Oregon for a while, we were doing it there. I'm now doing it here. And we're not allowed to talk about health issues as a result of cell towers. And my question is to you, why is that? If they're so safe and healthy and wonderful, why are we not allowed to talk about that? That always makes me question things, you know, question the motive. So that's all I have to say, and I would urgently recommend you deny this 100-foot tower. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sarah?
Phil Davis.
Okay, my name's Phil Davis, 2647 Country Park Drive. And I'm here, I'm a volunteer with Yavapai County Search and Rescue, I'm a first responder, backcountry team. I'm here just in my own personal time. What I provided you is a coverage grid that we use on our cellphones and tablets. First one is T-Mobile, it's not very good in Williamson Valley. Second page is Verizon, which is pretty good. And third page is AT&amp;T. We use an app on our phones when we go out on rescues looking for unfortunate subjects, and so we love technology. Right now, out of our budget for the towers, we use, this is what we communicate with, we've got our radios, and we've got towers on Mingus, Wildflower, Bill Williams Mountain, all of those. But we like cellular technology, so we're proponent for it. It's a game changer, it's disruptive technology. The deputies can see us real-time as we're out in the woods. We can see each other real-time in the dark, in the middle of the night. So we rely on the cellular technology. On the last page, you will see something called, it's a line of sight, okay? And that shows this area right here, shows downtown Prescott. If you put 100-foot tower there, you're gonna be able to see it from here. The next to the last page is line of sight with 100-foot tower on that butte. You'll be able to see that tower from north of I-40 and Seligman, that's 56.68 miles away. This proposed water tower, let me see, the proposed water tower is gonna be at 5,755 feet. Topographic lines, I know that butte, I've been up and down it, I know all the choya cactus, it hurts. We use that as a training area. The proposed cell tower is maybe 20 feet below the water tank, okay? Don't be misled by the photographs we're showing. My colleagues are saying this is gonna be a stealth tower. It's not gonna be a stealth tower. We don't need 100 feet. We've got pretty good coverage, okay? Down inside the Williamson Valley, not so good. We don't do our searches there. But Verizon covers it pretty well. Does it have to be 100-foot tower? Probably not, we can go less with that. But I agree, we are gonna open up a Pandora's Box. You look at the hideous tower out past Outer Loop Road disguised as a pine tree, that's not what we want to have here in Prescott. That's a, there's an Indian fort, I don't know if you've ever been up there, it's beautiful. There's a stone fort that's, God knows how old it is. Take a hike up there and take a look around, it's spectacular, okay? This tower will not blend in with the aesthetics at all. You wouldn't put a cell tower like this on Thumb Butte, would you? No. You wouldn't put it on Bell Rock out by Sedona? No, you wouldn't. So I ask you guys to consider, you're gonna put a tower there, fine, stick within the 35-foot rule right there, it's there for a reason. It looks like an AT&amp;T move, it looks like possibly, T-Mobile needs help out there also, I don't know if they're on the tower, but if you put in one 100-foot tower with a blinking light, because 877 flights, if you look at the runway, Ted, you know, from the airport, it points-
That's time.
... right to that Indian Mesa, okay? That's where those flights are going, and guess what? They use that Indian Mesa as a loop. That's where they either head westbound or eastbound. Not a great idea. You're gonna be able to see a red blinking light from here, you're gonna be able to see a red blinking light on that tower from all over Prescott, all the way up to Seligman. So I'm asking for a continuance. We love cellular technology, we all rely on them, but let's kind of go slow on this one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. No more applause.
One second, don't move. I'm leaning towards a continuance, because there's a lot more we need to understand. You gave us a lot of graphics. Does the color code mean anything here? Red is good and blue is bad, or?
In the public domain, there's an app called SarTopo CalTopo, all the search and rescue units unit, caltopo slash SarTopo. You can, you can put a tower on top of that Indian Mesa, and excuse me, Mark, but you can move that tower in five-foot increments, and that'll show coverage for all of the cellular coverage, all the cellular companies. So it creates a shadow effect because it's line of sight. We use line of sight on rescues looking for a subject, okay? We also use it for cell coverage, too, in case we want to try and reach, or we're having trouble, we need to climb up onto a higher point for access.
On your first slide, you have T-Mobile coverage.
Yep.
It looks like pink. Is pink good or bad?
Pink is good. The big circle over Williamson Valley, you can see all the-
That circle is what? That's bad coverage.
Bad coverage, terrible coverage.
So on the next one, it's Verizon, that says everything's pretty good.
Pretty good. There's a lot of, there's a lot of holes, they don't show it. You haven't, I haven't drilled down far enough to show where the shadows are, but there's definitely shadows.
Earlier, I referenced my friend out at Granite Oaks-
Yep.
... and they're having a problem with Verizon now.
Yep.
Okay, the next one is AT&amp;T coverage, and that's blue. Does blue mean not good?
That's AT&amp;T's latest coverage they provide for the search and rescue units.
So the color means nothing, it's just-
No, the color means good.
The color means good.
Color means good.
They cover Williamson Valley?
That's what they-
The way it is now?
That's the data they're showing first responders. And by the way, I'm here on my own behalf, I'm not here, I can arrange to be here on behalf of Yavapai County Search and Rescue, but I found out about this this morning, so pardon me.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sarah, anybody else?
Cowboy Dave.
Good morning, council members. So let me be the first to say-
Excuse me.
... I don't know if this is good or bad.
Could we have your name and address, please?
David Segal. Everybody knows me as Cowboy Dave, 1161 Deerfield Road. There's a repeating theme that I keep hearing this morning. One, coming from the applicant, of we can put on more providers. Now, having been in the telecom industry, that means it's a moneymaker for them. Those providers do not have to do the build-out, they can lease time and equipment without the extraordinary cost. Number two, the other thing that I've heard, is that this council does not have, seem to have done its own due diligence. Staff mentioned that they got no response from the fire department, yet right here in Prescott, we have the 911 center that covers the entire 400 square miles of Yavapai County and interfaces with several smaller cities on the outlying edge. Why have they not been contacted? Why have they not given their input as to whether or not this is truly needed? I'm all in favor of first responders giving them every opportunity that they need. Has this council done an environmental impact report on health and safety? I would say probably not. I am in absolutely agreement, this council needs to do more research. This council needs to look into the cost analysis and the potential income that the applicant will be getting from their venture. This council should, at the very least, postpone any decision until more information is made available by those who would require any improvement. Reach out to the director of the 911 center, reach out to the police department. Do your due diligence, have the applicant pay for an impact report for health and safety. Do not make a hasty decision, please.
No signals, no applause. This is a meeting to receive information from all parties, and there will be decorum throughout this meeting. Do I make myself clear? Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Sarah?
Sierra Jamie.
My name is Sierra Jamie, 5925 Bailey. Yes, sorry. I'm a citizen of Prescott, and I am very concerned about this proposed cell tower, and I agree with the previous comments from fellow concerned citizens. I understand you have very specific points you can object on this topic, but I would like to just share my personal experiences as this deeply affects my health and my partner's health, who is unable to be here. My boyfriend and I moved here in order to recover our health after becoming extremely sick, one of our health issues being extreme sensitivity to EMFs, mainly cell towers and 5G towers. My boyfriend is unable to be here or anywhere near the downtown area, in fact, due to the nearest tower between Willis and Gurley. He has been greatly affected by this, every day, still, currently. These symptoms arrive within seconds of coming into the general vicinity of these towers. They include a long list of physical ailments, inflammation, brain fog, confusion, disturbances in sleep, motor function, anxiety, it's a long list, I'm not gonna bore you with that. We've just recently moved right off of Williamson Valley Road. A huge factor in finding a safe place for us to live was to be as far away from a tower as possible. That's not an easy thing to find. I have cell service at my rental property, and from my understanding, a lot of people have Wi-Fi in their home nowadays, staying connected is not a huge issue from my standpoint. It's actually getting away from these health issues that we are experiencing. It doesn't seem like there's a lot of studies that have been done showing the safety of these cell towers. I know from other companies, namely Children's Health Defense, they have actually sued the FCC because there are no studies showing that these are safe. There are none. They are just rolling them out and unleashing them upon the public, and citizens such as myself, the so-called canaries in the coal mine, are trying to explain to people that these are not safe technologies. We can feel it, we feel it every day, everywhere we go. We have to wrap our lives around finding safe places that we can live and go. And I just ask you to take into consideration these concerns from citizens who have been deeply affected by-
30 seconds.
... this technology and hear our voices before subjecting us to these threats. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Sandra Gilliam.
Hello. Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Sandra Gilliam. I live in 4055 West Morgan Trail in Chino Valley. I'm a PhD in biology, and I've been living in Chino Valley in an area where there was no towers around, and our coverage was very fine. Then they added, a mile away, a tower, and from day one, not even day one, day minus five, they were making a test, and I had no idea, I was in my home, and I had no idea they were putting them on. I was in my home, and I had no idea they were putting them on. They made the test. I was, I had no idea about this. I went on the floor. I was attacked on my brain, and I went on the floor, and I couldn't move for an hour. And then, a few days later, they did that again. They went on the service, and I went on the floor again. And I had many issues with this tower while we had coverage. Nothing justifies any tower to be added. We already have everything we need. So please consider, really, that it's a true issue. And there are many, you know, Sierra, I was just telling you about the fact that there's no studies about these towers being safe, but there are many, many thousands and thousands of studies saying that is really detrimental for health. And nothing justifies also something that close to a water tank. And me as a biologist, I'm telling you, microwaves like this has effect directly on the water that we're going to consume later. And all the area with nature and animals and trees is going to have effect also. So just please consider that. I do oppose to this tower 100 feet or even two inches. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Christine Robertson.
I'm Christine Robertson, of 4860 West Zesky Road. I live out near Outer Loop Road on Williamson Valley, so I'm familiar with driving and using my cellphone along the way. I have a couple of issues with this. I'm just building a home on Buena Vista, so it's within two miles of this proposed cell tower. And I'd like to know why it would need to be up to 100 feet. You know, 35 is what it's designated for, and when we bought our property, that was a consideration. And having this changed, based on recommendations from the telecommunications, I have doubts I'm also a mountain biker, and so this cell tower is just right above, connected to the Brown Loth system where mountain bikers go. And I am concerned riding my bike and with radiation, and with many people having had heart attacks and different things have been documented with radiation. And so it's a concern for people that are exercising. Certainly, if it's 100 feet, and then things always get pushed, if they were able to push for 120 feet, it would affect everybody in the community there. Anyways, thank you very much, and I vote, I would like for a continuance on this, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
How do I do this?
Anne Moore.
Counsel, my name is Anne Moore. I live at 1397 Pinion Shadow Drive in the Southview Development. I oppose this 100-foot tower, and I recommend you deny the proposal in front of you. This tower is not within any kind of appropriateness within this area. You can see in the photos how it sticks out. It stands out. There's nothing close to a 100-foot pine tree in the area anywhere, especially with a red blinking light on top of it. Secondly, in the recommendations for this tower that was presented, there were several recommendations to improve 911 service, improve intercommunications with response agencies. There's no data saying that the 911 service is insufficient. The insufficiency with 911 is with regard to response times, not accessing 911. Two more of the recommendations refer to California. We are not California, not yet anyway. Do not apply other people's situations to us. Our inter-agency conversations and communications are excellent. They can respond. They can take care of what's needed. Thirdly, you don't know what these waves coming from the tower can do to the human body, to any living organism. We don't know. So I recommend you deny this deviation for a 100-foot tower. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Sarah?
Amy Wing.
There you go.
Amy Wing, 240 McCormick Street, apartment 16 in Prescott. And I believe this is a profound decision with much complexity, and I am really moved. I share the concerns of the speakers before me. I oppose this, and I really think at least a continuance to find out the results of the FOIA and everything that's been brought up. Currently, sellers are required to disclose a prospective buyer's neighborhood noise, nuisance, or hazards. HUD refers to cell towers as hazard and nuisance, okay? So I'm reading this because I have so much to cover. Appraisers have to document when there is a nearby cell tower and make property value adjustments accordingly, typically a lower value. How far away from the proposed tower will a seller disclose statement? And appraisal have to consider the concluding hazard and nuisance when adjusting property values. When current and future housing developers will be affected by being required to have a seller disclosure statement and an appraisal, including cell tower proximity listed as hazard and nuisance. The Communications Act of 1934, a U.S. federal law signed by the president and codified in chapter, I'm just going to keep going. It includes "for the purpose of promoting safety of health and life and property." Let's see. I think this is too long. I'm going to jump ahead. Note that in 1996, the amended National Wireless Telecommunications Sighting Policy reiterated the original intent of the 1934 Act to promote safety of life and property. Legislative intent overrides specific interpretations. I feel like I need to jump ahead, or I won't be able to cover this. Okay. The FCC lost a lawsuit.
30 seconds.
And this is really important. The court agreed, citing numerous instances, the commission's arbitrary and capricious failures to respond, including evidence that exposure to radio frequency radiation at levels below current limits may cause negative health effects, the inadequacy of testing procedures, especially for children. So this is deeply concerning. I just want to say that, I just want to finish with, there are so many issues with this. If you are going to do the due diligence, it's so important that you get all the information that you need to make a decision, and everyone has raised so many concerns, and there does not seem like the need for this has been articulated and well justified. There's alternatives, and that's been brought up, the fiber optics and alternative sites. There's so much to this, and it really needs to be looked at seriously, and I think that it should be opposed, but if you are going to look at it, look at it in depth.
Thank you for your comments. Sarah, anybody else?
That's all the speaker cards I have.
Do you want to make additional comment?
I would like to, please.
Okay. Two-minute limit, please.
I think the audience here has demonstrated their opposition to this proposed tower, intrusive tower, and I didn't hear anybody except for the AT&amp;T spokesperson saying anything that would be good about this, except for they would have better coverage and certainly they would make more money. So I would propose that we listen to the audience and have a continuance or denial on this situation, so we can investigate it. And we only got a week's notice that you were going to do this, so a lot of people were unable to attend because of their schedules. So a week is not sufficient for us to comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, did you sign up to make a present?
Can you please fill out a comment card and bring it up? Just grab a comment card and bring it up with you. Yeah, sir, she's going to hand you. If you could fill that out, you could come up and speak. Please bring it up to...
Please put the motions back up on the screen, please. Thank you.
Hello, can you, is that okay? My name is Brittany Bates. I live at 4685 Cody Drive. I live in Longview, and what's up?
Little closer to the microphone.
Okay. Is that better? We can see the water tower from our front of our house, and my children play outside there every day, and I feel very concerned about the proposed cell tower, and I hope that you can deny this or at least give a continuance. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, why don't you come on up, and we'll finish up your sheet, okay?
I'll finish this and give it to whoever. John Lamar, 1415 Pinion Shadow Drive in Southview. I think, I agree with all the comments that have been made here, except for the AT&amp;T guy, and he's in business to make money. I think you've heard enough information here that you could not make a decision today to approve this because you would not be informed on all the data that you're missing on this topic, and it's not like this is an urgent thing to get approved. The other thing that came up that I didn't hear about, Indian Hill has been there a long time, and there are Indian artifacts on that hill, and I've been in Southview for over 20 years, and I've seen some of them. And I think whatever happens on a tower should not be 100-foot, and it should be close to 35-foot there, but you also need to take into consideration the artifacts that are on that property up there. When, if you in the end approve a building, that you need to look for those artifacts in the digging and stuff like that, because that was an old site for the Yavapai as a lookout, to see white men coming and the Apaches coming. So that's a very important historical hill. It was one of their five points. So anyway, I don't think, at this point, you can make an informed decision to approve this as is, and it should be tabled and give people that live in Southview and that area and in Prescott more time to come and comment to this board for an important decision is this. So I'm against the tower being 100-foot. I'm against the tower, period, but you need more data to make an intelligent decision. Thank you. No one did mention whether it was a 4G or a 5G tower, because a 5G tower doesn't need the height. 4G needs more height than a 5G, and none of that came up from AT&amp;T or that stuff. And let's see. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Just turn the sheet in. What do you get in your plea? Comments from commission members?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I think we're more confused than we were at the beginning, but we're confused on a higher level about more important things. Tammy, I'd like to ask, there's two ways that we can continue this meeting. One is a continuous. I think there's another...
But we needed our staff to know why you're deferring it and what you need from us to review prior, and I'll defer to Matt to go over what we can provide.
Okay, here's, I think Deb Miller made a comment that she's asked some questions she hasn't heard answers to. We had a discussion of alternate sites, but we haven't seen alternate sites. The question came up of data versus cellphone. That may be a simple answer to that question, but I think it's a good question to answer. And then I'd like to see a reconciliation between the coverage maps that were presented to us that compared to the coverage maps that we saw in the presentation. And then, I'm not quite clear in the view from Southview. You showed one slide that proposed what the tower would look like, but didn't you say that we would see the water tower from that site? I don't remember seeing that. And I would welcome any other questions from commission members to add to that list.
Mr. Susan Graham, I'm concerned about the health aspects.
And we'll defer to our attorney in regards to talk about that part.
Yeah, thank you. And I've been doing this for about 25 years, and health concerns always are a topic of interest for the general public. But what I advise my client is that based on federal preemption of law, you're not allowed to consider those health impacts in the sighting or construction of law. That's language taken straight out of the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996, where they put in those five limitations. That's one of them. So when you're making a decision, you've got to go back to your land use control, which the federal Congress said you still have the ability to do that, and that's based on 2.4.49 of the Land Development Code. So you really should be looking at land use issues, not the health issues, because theoretically this gets denied, and the reason is because of adverse health issues that goes to court, we lose that immediately, because we're acting outside your scope of authority.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think one of the concerns that I have is kicking this can down the road with continuance, because there's, from what I've heard from people speaking, there is no way they're going to change their minds about how they feel about this tower, positively or negatively, mostly entirely negatively. So I don't think that's going to change very much. I think this commission really needs to make a recommendation to council, one way or another, and avoid, like I said, nothing's going to change between now and a month from now in terms of the amount of protest that's going to come up here. So I'd say that we do our job and make a decision.
Jim Kloszuski, I still have issue with that we do not have all the due diligence we need from first responders. Is this needed? From a technical standpoint or technology standpoint, is the tower and coverage really needed compared to what we have today? I don't know if that's part of our power to discuss those things or defer the due diligence. I just don't think we have enough information to decide whether this tower is needed or not.
So are you asking us to reach out to our fire and police for comments in regards to this tower?
I would, at minimum, like you to reach out for those comments.
Thank you. Thank you.
Also, the absence of not seeing alternative sites, which was part of the earlier presentation on our screen in our packet, is I'd like to know what other alternative sites might work.
Thank you.
I have a curiosity on, it appears that other cellphone companies have coverage out there. I'd like to confirm, do they have coverage, or is there a gap for everybody? If they have coverage, why can't AT&amp;T use their towers? Matt, can I ask that?
Yeah, that's part of your inquiry.
Other comments? Is there a...
So we have two possible dates. One is just two weeks away, which probably wouldn't give us enough time to do the due diligence, which would be October 26th, but the next month away is November 9th, and that can give us enough time to work with the applicant to try to come up, to look at other alternative sites. They may have looked at data versus cell talk coverage, the coverage maps compared to what was provided, and try to reach out to police and fire and probably the sheriff, because the sheriff oversees the Williamson Valley area for a different coverage. So I recommend deferral, we recommend to the November 9th date-specific month.
Would someone want to make a recommendation?
I recommend that we continue or defer.
Defer.
Defer to the next meeting on November 9th.
We have a motion and a second.
The point of order. Within that motion, should we not include the information specifically that the commission is asking for?
So I'll go through that list to make sure I've got it covered, and the applicant too, was the alternative sites that they may have looked at, the data versus talk coverage that was asked about for their propagation maps, if that's still talk data or data coverage. The coverage maps compare them to what was provided to you, and I'll provide the applicant with that, and then fire and police and sheriff, if they have adequate coverage in those areas, to reach out to them.
Would the maker of the motion approve including that information into the motion?
You said you're going to include them, right?
Yes, I have those listed.
Yes.
Then I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, Sarah, would you call?
Commissioner Gamboji.
I approve.
Commissioner Graham?
Approve.
Commissioner Kozowski?
Approve.
Commissioner Riley?
Approve.
Commissioner Whiting?
Approve.
Commissioner Michaelman?
Approve.
Do we have any staff updates?
Not today.
Okay. Then the meeting is adjourned.